Good afternoon. The June 9, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentation to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing of student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Lee, District 2 is absent. Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Brett Carson, Principal of Forest High School, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. I have the very large pleasure of introducing our state softball championship team. This is the first state championship that Forest has had in more than two decades, so we're very excited about this. And the girls did it with class, and they did it through a commitment and hard work. So we're very happy to be able to support them. And first, I'm going to introduce our coach, Pam Silvestri, who's been our coach for the past four years, and she's going to have the honor of introducing the girls.
On January 12th, a group of young ladies walked into the Forest dugout eager to make their way, their goal that they had set for themselves. One goal, one team, the Wildcat Way. The real story of their quest started four years ago when Mr. Gregory, past president of Forest High School, hired me, and I told him then, four years ago, that my goal was to get back to the roots of a successful winning district, regionals and more, as did the previous coaches of Dooley, Lingle, Ademec with a winning team. With the help of our awesome coaches, Anthony White, Mike Conrad, this team moved forward to their quest and dream of winning a regional championship and a state tournament. These goals, these girls worked for every out, every run, and developed under the guidance of the coaching staff over the years. The rigorous schedule that they took on with vigor this year put Wildcat softball in Marion County on the map. The Kissimmee Classic, an invitation-only tournament, tested the players. Being on Bright House for the nation to watch tested the players. Overcoming adversity tested the players. Keeping up with their academics and maintaining a GPA, team GPA of 3.59 tested the players. And the final test was the Final Four, and I say they passed the test. I would like to thank the school board members, Mr. Tomlin, for giving these girls the opportunity to participate in their chosen sports, for all the teams of Marion County to participate in their chosen sports, to allow stipend coaches to lead and guide their players, and players to fulfill their dreams and learn lifelong skills that they need to be successful in their future. This group of young ladies showed sportsmanship throughout the season. A special group, a special thank you to our parents, our hard-working Booster Club, administrative staff, our athletic director, Jody Phillips, Mr. Carson, our principal, Mr. Gregory, who gave me the chance in the beginning, our fans, and finally, the FHS community. Now I'd like to introduce the softball team. Abby Conrad. Rachel Mazurko, conference athlete. Caitlin Peters, another conference athlete. Hannah Conrad. Madison Carmichael. Nicole Smith. Kadasha McNeely. And Morgan White, who is our State Farmer, State Player of the Year for the entire state. Missing is gone either at work or they're gone off playing on their travel softball teams is Lexi Wall, Michaela Stokes, Ansley Copeland, Kaylee Chappell, Olivia O'Quinn, Jasmine Haynes, and Molly Shudders. Ladies, you come, do the pledge?
The flag is behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your seeds. Okay, bring them up.
But girls, just before you walk away.
One more thing. One more thing. Go ahead and go get them. Thank you. One more thing.
Y'all can do whatever you want.
They're bringing gifts.
We want you to have a memory of our season of receiving the key to the city, of being on those talk shows, and the girls enjoyed seeds for every game, but the seeds that were planted in their lives and memories were made for what really counts. So thank you again for your support. Enjoy your seeds, and thank you for helping us plant them.
Girls, I want to be the first board member tonight to say congratulations, and I realize that, you know, playing sports is a hard thing, and then keeping up with your academics. You've done a wonderful job, you know, and this is so dear to me because, you know, I graduated from Forest, you know, and the Wildcats were state champs back then in football. That's a long time ago. But we did it, and here you are making history again for Forest. I want to thank each of you for participating in our sports, and also thank you for keeping up with your grades, you too. Thank you so much. Miss Stacy?
And I'd also like to congratulate you. I was at some of your games, and I was just amazed. It was so hot out there a couple of times. I had to leave, I was so hot. But you girls are just amazing, and my kids played sports at Forest High School. And wow, I mean, I remember when they just were district champs, how exciting that was. And for you to be state champs, and people who don't, I guess people who don't have children who play high school sports don't really understand the excitement. I'm so excited you girls can just have this room tonight as far as I'm concerned. I'm so impressed, but also so impressed with your coaches. We don't, our coaches do this almost as volunteers. And one thing I'd like to say, I'm going to do all I can to work so that our coaches get more higher stipends because they do it for the love of all of you kids. My husband has also been a coach. I understand exactly how much work it takes, but most people in this community have no idea how much work it takes. And I want to thank your coaches. I love you. Thanks.
Mr. James?
You know, being a Wildcat is a tremendous honor, and to be a Supercat is the thing. So you know I've been around if I say Supercat. I just want you guys to know this, you're hunted now. Where you were looking for the number one slot, they're going to be looking for you. And the sad part about it, you have to do it again. And so I want to congratulate you guys, and I just know that you all have to do it again because we have a true history of good softball played in this county, and I think you guys know that. And I just want all of you to understand from all of us, from all the people that's looking at this program, congratulations, but you got to do it again. And that's part of being a champion, you got to do it again, ladies. So congratulations, and to the whole staff, you represent us well, and indeed, you're Supercats. So we're bringing that back, I'll bring it alive again, I think you understand where I am. It's good to be a Supercat, guys, but you're hunted. You will be hunted next year. You will be hunted. Okay, thank you.
Ms. King?
Congratulations. I haven't been around long enough to know what a Supercat is, but I agree, you guys are super, and I know you are Wildcats, so congratulations. And I'm proud of you guys also. It does take determination and true grit and rigor, and you guys have been awesome examples of that. And I just am confident in that you guys will do this again, in anything you do in life, not even just softball. So congratulations.
I just want to finish, because she did announce that Morgan was Player of the Year. Pam Silvestri is also Coach of the Year, so she was given that honor as well. So we're very fortunate to have the coaching staff that we have and the girls that we have. So thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Board members, with the exception of Item C-57, which has been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 9, 2015 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording, and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? Call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the motion carries four to zero with one absent. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 7, 2015 administrative briefing and work session, May 12, 2015 school board meeting? I have a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries four to zero, one absent. Thank you, board. Individuals who have completed the appropriate form prior to 5:40 P.M. will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you do plan to address the school board tonight, please be aware of the school board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Christian, who's standing by the door, or from one of the front tables. Under the school board's procedures, AV presentations are permitted and provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time consideration, the school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, board members. Chris Altobello, 2020 Northeast, 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. Last name is spelled A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L-O. History recalls that in 1676, Sir Isaac Newton, in a letter to his rival, Robert Hooke, wrote that "If I have seen a little further, it is by standing on the shoulders of giants." The meaning of the phrase suggests that Newton would not have been able to achieve what he did without the accomplishments and intellect of those before him. Just as Newton had Galileo and Kepler, teachers have often stood on the shoulders of giants in our profession. Personally, if it were not for the Craighams, the Jim Butchers, the Fran Calderones, Tom Colmans, Bob Lesleys, or Tim Ballaces of Marion County's past, I probably wouldn't be in the profession today. Tonight, I want to talk to you about Ocala's Giants, who we said goodbye to last Thursday with the close of the 2014-15 school year. I am referencing the scores of teachers and administrators who retired, many of whom dedicated their entire professional life to public education and Marion County. During our annual retirement dinner this year, the MEA honored our members who retired from the Marion County Public Schools. We had over eighty members retire, and as we do every year, we calculate the amount of years each of our retirees devoted to public education. This year, our eighty retirees totaled more than twenty-two hundred years of dedicated teaching experience, serving thousands of children in the process. And that's just the MEA members. I bring this to your attention in light of trending data that the MEA, the Florida Education Association, and I'm sure you as a district are closely monitoring, the increasing number of retirement-aged teachers. Our baby boomers are at or near retirement, just as the economy begins to improve and Marion County and Florida as a whole experience increased student enrollment again. We are headed for crisis, and unless we take a proactive stance across the state and in our own backyard, our community and our children will suffer. I read the recent article published in the Star Banner regarding minority recruitment, and while I applaud the board and superintendent for recognizing the importance of diversity in our workforce, I would argue that it is not just minority recruitment that we must focus our attention on. It's recruitment in general. How will Marion County replace the hundreds of giants we will most likely lose to retirement over the next few years? The MEA is in the process of working with our leadership to outline what we believe will be essential to attract and then retain quality professional educators. We should take a lesson from the recent crisis within our county fire department, and we should use that as a teachable moment that can cross over to our profession. The MEA will bring our vision to you, this board, in the coming months, and are prepared to work with you as partners to achieve the goal of ensuring that every student has a high-quality, or highly qualified professional educator in front of them every day. Now this brings me back to Sir Isaac Newton. Newton was perhaps the most famous for his Laws of Motion. Newton's Third Law states that for every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. I believe we can all agree that, in this case, retirement is the action. The real question is what will be Marion's equal and opposite reaction? Thank you.
Ms. Block?
We have one speaker at the end.
Okay. Thank you. Well, at this time, I think, I thought I saw Brian Florio out there. Brian, are you still here with us? Can you stand up for us? Brian is a Boy Scout. Can you tell us, can you come forward?
We just want to see you. My name is Brandon Florio.
Brandon, yes, how are you, Brian?
I came here tonight with Troop 563, working on my citizenship and the community merit badge.
Yeah. Well, we welcome you, and we thank you for coming, and these are our board members that are around here. Come up and shake our hand. We really appreciate you coming. It's good to see our Boy Scouts coming out to our meetings, you know. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item C-54, and that's the GED NCS with Pearson, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, and Item C-8 DESF, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion. May I have a motion, please? It's been properly moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, Ms. Boynton, I believe that you meant C-57, C-57. I believe you said C-54.
Yes, C-57.
Just wanted to make that correction. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was motion by Mr. James.
Mr. No, motion by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. James.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes four to zero with one absent. May I have a motion to approve the DES of Florida LLC Letter Purchase Order Number 2015-FL32-MKEN to contract an employer in the position of interim CTAE focused computer programmer for a period of six months? I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Mrs. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I did. I'll speak on it. I guess I'm the same place that the Elatcho County School Board is with DES. They use the service for probably ten years, maybe even longer, and there were school board members like me that just felt like it wasn't the right thing to do to go against the intent of the law, where the intent of the law was that when an employee went into the drop, that they understood that they would be, you know, unemployed by the district for a certain amount of time, that they could not come back, and for a while, there was a dead timeframe. And we've managed to be able to fulfill all of our obligations all through the years by standing by that. And the Elatcho County School Board also saw that certain people were being asked to come back. It almost appeared like a promised land as far as for certain people to come back, you know, and you could find where different ones had given campaign contributions to school board members and to the different people, and it just became something where it looked like it was for the special people that got to come back and get like a little bonus of getting a, because it's not like you can retire and just go make thirty or forty dollars an hour, just anywhere. And so it's almost became like a little bonus for people who were perceived are real. Whether it was perceived or whether it was real, it was the perception of the community in Elatcho County, and gradually, the school board members decided to completely get out of this because it seems like, I know it's, we talk about it being part of the toolbox. There's like little buzzwords for it all. And the problem with that is government can always create a crisis, that we have to go do something right now and go above, you know, go beyond the law, around the law, and invent a crisis. And I guess I'm just not going to support any of the DES contracts. I know I'm going to be a Lone Ranger. I also was willing to possibly look at this DES contract for short-term people, like for three months, you know, to do it. And that was what I understood that the board was going to look at, was to go use it for like a three-month stopgap where something really happened, where an employee got sick, like we've used it one time, and I did approve that. But now it's, you know, the contract overall for DES will be for a year, and that's not a short time, that's not a short, that's not short. So it looks like we're just, you know, going off, going off our meds again and going in the wrong direction, in my opinion, and I'm probably the only one that feels that way. But because of that, I'm not going to support any of the DES contracts, and that's fine if no one agrees with me, but that's the way I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Stacy. Does any other board member have a comment?
Yes.
Mr. James?
We have discussed this on several occasions, and I just would like to remind all of us here that we are a school board with our own determination and our own destination and where we work. Now, we discussed this at a work session. The superintendent presented us with why he felt that this person that we were bringing under this contract was needed. And again, I will go to the fact that we gave the superintendent an opportunity to put some things into his toolbox so he would be able to fulfill these pertinent needs that we have. And for us not to take advantage of it, it would be an injustice to us in Marion County. Because when I look at what we're asked to vote on tonight, we talked about this thoroughly. It was explained to us why this individual was needed. We also rewrote the contract, so it would give us some protections and guidelines. And when I look at us going over it again and make it seem as though that there's some people out there, or there is something out there that we should be afraid of, and I don't think as a board we should rely on other boards that may have had an experience that is entirely different from what we have experienced to go down their path. Let us choose our own destiny, and I support what the superintendent has asked us to do in reference to this contract.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton, and thank you, Mr. James. And yes, as the board knows, that you have approved of this in concept. At our last work session that Mr. James mentioned you, there were some discussions about the time limits, whatever, and you can notice that this particular, I knew that this particular part-time contract was only for six months. We went ahead and actually put it in the motion for you tonight. This is, again, an opportunity. Broward County is the pass-through agent that is sponsoring nine different community and vocational programs to input this particular kind of student management system software. An individual that I'm recommending will work for no longer than six months, and he'll work for approximately twenty hours a week. And this is not a promised land for that particular individual. This is a unique need that we have that I think would, and I think that this individual services would make our CTAE program a much better program, and that's why I'm very comfortable in making that recommendation to you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any more discussion from the board? Okay, I would like to say, though, at our last work session, let it be understood that the timeframe of one year has not been voted on. It is not a timeframe of one year, it's a limitation, and that will come before the board for a public hearing on July 28. That policy will come before the board then, so if anyone has any comment on it, they are free to come and comment on it. But I do believe when there's situations that occur that, you know, we can't control. And there are also times when we need the best to fill that position, and so I'm going to support this policy tonight. I also think that because our policy that's coming forth has some strict guidelines that the superintendent agreed to do on, he didn't have to, but he agreed to because he is in charge of hiring and firing, he agreed to lay out the criteria of what is a critical situation, you know, how long it's going to be needed and everything. So I'm quite comfortable with the contract, and our attorney, I actually drafted the policy, so we're, I think we're moving on in the right direction, board, and I do know when things are in emergency, we need to look at it and understand those situations, so. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. King?
Yeah, well, every, I do agree that there-
Yeah, well, every, I do agree that there, every circumstance is, you know, individual and whatever, but I, again, would like to caution us to be careful, you know, that we don't use this as a crutch, because there's a lot of talent and potential in this county and our state, and I just want to make sure that we're not looking for that also.
I think that's why the policy lays it out, so that it won't, we won't fall into that little danger, because, I mean, it's easy, you know, you and I know, it's easy to look right over, but I think that it lays it right out, it has to be something critical.
Yes.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes, I'd like to respond. You know, there are a lot of computer programmers in the area, and, you know, I guess after six months, someone's going to be handling the computer system, and it's going to be another, there's going to be another situation where we can't go into the community and hire computer people, we have to hire from, you know, people who have been from our drop program, and, you know, honestly, and I happen to know that employee, and I think he's absolutely highly qualified, and, you know, and I just feel like if, I don't believe that this is a job that you have to, that nobody else can do, I believe that before we had DES, if this had happened two years ago, we'd have found someone to do it, and it would have been fine, and the sky would not have fallen, and the unicorns would not have visited us. But I just feel that, you know, I just don't see this as a crisis, and I've watched another school board go down this path, and I've watched it grow and grow and grow with them, and I just don't believe in reinventing the wheel. We will be there one day where they are at, there will be a day that we too will probably stop this, but I'm going to stop, I'm going to start, my vote will be against it now.
Any more discussion?
Call a question.
Okay. Question has been called, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
And the motion carries 3 to 1 with one member absent. At this time, I recognize Superintendent Tomlin.
Thank you, Chairman Boynton. Board, I request the chair declare good cause to discuss an emergency item regarding the repair of an air conditioning system chiller at Liberty Middle School. A 175-ton compressor that is part of the chiller system has failed and needs to be replaced.
I declare a good cause. Mr. Superintendent?
Board, this purchase is being requested as an emergency item due to the strict timelines for receiving the replacement part and completing the repairs to ensure the chiller unit is operational prior to the start of school in August. Also, there are safety concerns regarding air quality when this unit is not in operation. I recommend a motion be made to approve the emergency purchase for repair of the air conditioning chiller unit at Liberty Middle School.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? Call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes 4-0 with one absent. May I have a motion to approve the following donations: $1,000 to Bellevue High School from the Rotary Club of Bellevue, $1,000 to Dr. NS Jones Elementary School for Best of the Show from the 2015 Student Media Festival via the School Board of Marion County, $1,000 to Dr. NS Jones Elementary School from Dr. Anith Adesu, Dr. and Mrs. Anith Adesu, robotic pit valued at $9,425.65 to Forest High School from Stockner Constructions, $1,000 to Greenway Elementary School from Signature Brands, $1,000 to Harborview Elementary School for Best of Show from the 2015 Student Media Festival via the School Board of Marion County, $5,000 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the Lowe's Toolbox for Education Grants for the Healthy Empowerment from Vert, Through Vertical Hydroponic Growing Towers Project, $1,000 to Lakewood High School for Best of the Show from the 2015 Media Festival via the School Board of Marion County, Sports Complex valued at 15-plus million dollars to North Marion High School from Frank Starnak, Starnix, Curriculum Materials valued at $1,468.66 to RL Ward Highlands Elementary School from the Learning Wheel. May I have a motion, and a second please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King, and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? Call a question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. James, could you do our thanks tonight for us, please?
I don't have the total of all of this, but as you can see, there's substantial contributions that were made tonight, and I would say on behalf of all the students in Marion County, thanks to the people that are really stepping up to the plate, and I just know that the things that we are doing with our contributions are incredible, and when I look at the kids, everything from the FFA to the new sports complex, we feel blessed in Marion County that we have people that are really stepping up to the plate. And if people have not seen a rendition of their complex out at North Marion, that's something to behold, and it's not costing us a thing. And again, I want to thank the people of Marion County and all the contributors for contributing to our kids. Job well done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. I will say, Mrs. Ely, in her absence, she did send me the total.[1027.66][1027.66](laughter) So it, I just, I just, I wanted to watch this gram a little, not really, $15,021,893.41, and that is awesome.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and the motion passes 4-0 to accept this, and thank you, board. Board members, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, June 18th at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to further discuss the 2015 to 2020 strategic plan and to receive an update on the 2015 to 2016 assessments, as well as review two pending legal issues, assessments compliance regarding Section 1,822 Florida Statute, and an opening meeting salary discussion regarding non-collective bargaining employees. At this time, the chair recognizes the board's attorney, Stephen Lake.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, on behalf of Attorney Gary Sanders with the Law Firm of Vice Cole, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation styled Francis Stift, the plaintiff, versus Marion County School Board, and Celeste Colbert defendants pursuant to Section 286, Decimal 011, Subsection 8, Florida Statutes, I'm requesting a session with the board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategy in regard to this litigation. I'll ask the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that the session be held at the conclusion of your board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 23rd at approximately 7:00 p.m. As required by this statute, only the superintendent or his designee, board members, and legal counsel can be present. I'll also ask a court reporter to record the session, as is also required by Florida Statutes. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with Brenda Flotketter as clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of litigation, that transcript will be made a public record.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Mr. Superintendent?
Board, I recommend that the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to Section 286.011, Print 8, Florida Statutes, to discuss pending litigation.
If, board, if there are no further objections, I will instruct our attorney to schedule the attorney-client session to be held at the end of the June 23rd, 2015 school board meeting, at approximately 7 o'clock p.m. Do we have a consensus with that? Okay, thank you. All right, board, at this time, you have any concerns or reports? I'll start with you, Mrs. King.
Well, I do have some reports. We've been very busy these past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to attend the fifth grade ceremony at Hamlet Bowen Elementary, and that was exciting because I was actually their teacher to some of them, and so that was a lot of fun. And I have also attended an IB graduation for Vanguard and their baccalaureate, and that was just a wonderful display of talent and creativity at its finest, and I'm just excited to see where these young adults are headed. I also attended Vanguard graduation with Ms. Boynton and Forrest, and we handed out diplomas, and it was just good, positive, community involvement to see where our future is headed, and just seeing these fresh-faced young adults was refreshing and inspiring as to where our future is heading. And also, speaking of the future, I would also like to address again that I am looking forward to the strategic planning, which is on June 18th for our work session later this month, as I am anticipating some forward thinking and a vision for our school district, because, I don't, hopefully you guys have this, but I have a sense of urgency for our community, and we need to get specific on how we're going to fix certain situations in our schools, and I'm looking forward to that. And, oh, I also need to add that this Sunday at the Veterans Memorial Park is Flag Day, and we'll actually have some of Marion County's finest students participating, and I know they would love to see you guys there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Thank you. I also attended my graduation, North Marion I attended this year, normally I do Forest High School, and Mrs. King and I did a switcheroo on that this year, because our calendars were so full, we couldn't, we both had the jiggle and everything, and I was excited to get to go to North Marion, it was a lot of fun, and it was just amazing to hear the valedictorian and the special people who gave their speech to their class, it was just amazing that, that, I know the teachers that, the teachers that have taught these students are just beaming when this, you know, when they, when they see what kind of happens at the end and at graduation. But the other topic that I'd like to talk about, we're going to have our parent group, our parent meeting next week, and I'm so excited about this parent advisory council to the school board. It is noticed, it is a public meeting, and school board members can come and listen, and people in the community can come, and I'm so hoping that Mr. Tomlin or Mr. Viennello or someone will come and help give us a little guidance from their angle, that the direction that they would like, because my experience is that probably I have been a visitor to this microphone right over here probably longer and more often than anyone in this room. Mr. Albatella, we're probably close, as far as visiting the mic, but I know I'll probably still have UB2 through the years, but the parents have had quite a voice over the years, and what's interesting is, is when us parents came and spoke at that mic over the years, we never lost a single battle with the school board on issues that we didn't agree with what was happening with the school board's legislation and their, or their policies. We always won, every single time. Why? Because the parents have more of a voice than they think they have. And the things that have happened over the years that changed because we visited the microphone and spoke to the school board ended up, actually, the administrator said it really worked out great for us, we're really glad you did it in the end. I remember career research was something that we needed off the table, that was a school board requirement for ninth graders, and we needed it off the table so that band students could have banned because of the way the schedules were, and it wasn't getting anywhere, and we worked, and the parents worked, and it happened, and, you know, we convinced the school board, you know, we had to go through a little election, but we got there. And so there's a lot of power in parents, but what I want the parents to understand is that we have a superintendent of schools that was the high school principal for my three children, and I can tell you, my three children, the ones that were registered in Marion County voted for Mr. Tomlin, their votes with him, that he's going to do what's good for kids, and I want the parent group to be very transparent, I want us to have no more unicorns running around, we don't need to have any fears, there really are no unicorns, the sky's not going to fall if we make some changes, and I look forward to doing things where, you know, I'll have to talk a little bit about Yoda, since we also talk about unicorns. Yoda says either do, the unicorns, the, you know, the things, the terrible things that's going to happen if we change, that's the unicorns that are going to get us, but Yoda says we're going to either do or we do not do, there is no such thing as trying, which kind of addresses what you're talking about, Mrs. King, about our strategic plan and bringing some urgency here, this is, there's no such thing as, we don't try, we either do it or we don't, that's what leaders do. Managers try, leaders do, or they do not. Managers are caretakers. There's been enough caretaking taking place in this district for many, many years, and I'm looking forward to the parents and everybody working with the superintendent and the school board, and I look forward to, one, hopefully, one of the administrators will be at our meeting next Monday night, to chat with the parents and kind of give us their vision of what they would like to see us do, because they may have some ground that we haven't even thought of that we really need to tread on, that maybe we can do a little easier than some of the administrators can do if the parents lead the movement. And so, you know, I'm putting, as the chairman of the parent advisory council, I'm inviting, you know, if the administrators would like to get together, I'd love to have one of you, and the King, of course, would be Mr. Tomlin, I'd love to have him there if it's any way he could make clear his schedule, but if he can't, he can send someone in his place. But I guess that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Could you tell us the place and the time?
It's going to be, I'm sorry, it's going to be right here at this school board meeting, at this school board room next week, and are we starting at 5:30 or 6:30? 6:30.
Six o'clock.
Okay, we're going to start at 6:00 here in this school board room, and we'll have, is that what time it says?
What day?
Next Monday night. Is that the 15th? I think it's.
The 15th.
It's six, on Monday, the 15th.
June 15th, it's a Monday, okay. And so I look forward to seeing anyone that wants to visit us here, and there might be some parents in the community that's listening right now, that would possibly have some things that they'd like to bring, but it's a very, we're very positive, we're very cooperative, we are excited about big things happening in Marion County, and everywhere you read about the problems with education, it comes down to what the parents, they need help from the parents, we're not getting to the parents. And this is a door that has been opened up in Marion County, unlike probably a door that's, probably no district has opened one quite like this, and it's time for everybody to get on board with our public school system and make it the place to be for all kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Mr. James?
Just a few thank yous out there, and I would like to congratulate all the seniors and the administration that really put together our graduations, because they were exceptional, and they did an outstanding job, and the teachers that was there that really coordinate these activities, really need our hands on, a pat on the back, because they really did an outstanding job. One of the things I would like to just say to all the teachers that are retiring, and I had the opportunity just to acknowledge some teachers, and I would like to acknowledge these people that I know that worked with my son when he retired. Ms. Massey out of Dunellon High School was an exceptional teacher, and I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Bostick, because she encouraged my son to participate in PE, and now he's a PE teacher, so he, so hats off to her, and I'd just like to thank her, and Ms. Levann, and all the teachers that really had. that really had, are really an influence on what our students did. And it's always a pleasure at this point in the year to say, let's do it, the things that we did this year, but next year, let's do it better. And I will agree, when we start looking at our strategic plan and the balanced scorecard and all these things coming together, we can make, make another step to move in the right direction. I know we talk about all the things that other people have done around the state of Florida, but if, if I could get the Superintendent, before we close, before we move on, to just talk about some of the things that we've done, we have done, so like I was looking catapult and all the rest of the things that we have really accomplished during this year. Because when I think in terms of what the school district have, in spite of everything that people were going to say, we did and the Superintendent and the schools did an outstanding job. So, thank you to all the people that made this year a successful year.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Lake?
Nothing special there tonight.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton. Just a couple of comments that Board members know about this already, but tonight our Marion County Public School Board approved a contract with Silver River Mentoring and Instruction, better known as SERMI, to deliver the educational services to alternatively placed students. Our staff is very, very pleased that we've been able to work with the SERMI staff and we'll have ongoing relationships with them. SERMI is a not-for-profit organization, which is a huge deal. It's a locally governed institution. A, a number of variety of good options for alternatively placed students. They have a very good track record and, and again, we look forward to working with them. They'll be delivering our K through 12, kindergarten through 12th grade ESE programs, 6 through 12 gen ed programs. They'll also have an SRO onsite providing a Saturday school and an ESE pass site, which is a new thing they're going to be doing for us. The two programs they'll be operating will serve 170 or up to 170 ESE students and 250 general education students for a savings of over $400,000 on our previous contracts. So we're very pleased about that. A little news from the legislature today. You probably got an email this afternoon from FSBA. It appears that our two houses are making some progress. We only hope that our governor will see the, the positiveness of them working together and can also ratify that because I know Mrs. Boston Ellis is anxiously awaiting some, some good news from the legislature and some productive news so we can go ahead and continue the budget that we'll be working on this summer. A shout out for our summer voluntary kindergarten program. It's very small this year. We do have eight different school sites. We have 10 different teachers and we only have 67 students that are enrolled in that. We know that students that attend pre-K program have a greater opportunity for success in kindergarten and later on in life. So here's a shout out to parents. If you are interested in having your children participate in VPK, I have a name and a telephone number for you. I'm going to repeat it twice, Beth Aten, A-T-E-N, that's Beth Aten, at 671-4171. Again, that's 671-4171. We have room in some of our programs. We'd love to have your children join us. Tomorrow, the rest of our summer school programs will be starting. Another note, our internal auditing offices, we have now relocated them to the building right behind the main office here to be a little closer to Teresa Boston Ellis and her staff for supervision. We've done some minor remodeling in that area. Our tech services department did that and we're excited to have Christine Corrigan and her crew a little closer to us now. It's already been mentioned about the high school graduations and again, thank you Board members for participating and, and attending those. I'll give another numerical shout out. 2,462 seniors graduated from Marion County Public Schools this year. CTA graduation and the awarding of certificates is this Thursday evening, June 11th. I know we'll be busy, but I know that's a very special opportunity for them. And let's remember that our goal and your strategic plan that you've already cited tonight is developing successful citizens. It's a marathon. It's not a sprint and our district should be very proud of our graduation rate. That is an ongoing thing that's been going on for a number of years. Keep in mind, the state graduation rate is 76.1%, 76.1%. Our district graduation is 77.9%. Now, that includes also all of our alternative sites, the prison which we teach students in and also our DJJ programs. If you look at our own high schools, our regular seven high schools, we have, we range over the state percentage from 2.5% for one of our high schools to 15.5% over the state average for graduation rate. That's pretty impressive. We have two, one school at almost 90% and one school over 91.5% graduation rate. That's a pretty powerful statement for the work that our teachers and stu, and students do and parents do over the course of 13 years here in our school system. I know many of you will be traveling to the FSBA conference this week. Safe travels to all of you and let's not forget our Coalition Breakfast on Thursday morning. It's a very special meeting because on Thursday morning, our Coalition will be voting to add three additional counties to our already 10-county strong, a very powerful coalition. Sumter County, Pasco County, and Highlands County. I'm sure we'll have an affirmative vote on those, but I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam Secretary? Okay. The Board, the Board, I just want to say, I want to thank all the Board members for attending graduations. You know, it was so, it was such an awesome event, I, I thank, I want to thank all the teachers, the principals, you, Mr. Tomlin, because, you know, when you go to a graduation, you can then, I measure my county then, you know. You know, we're ranked, some people say 52, some say 57. We may be ranked there, but when you go to a graduation and you see the number of students, not just our valedictorians, but the number of students that graduate with honors or high honors. I, I went to Westport and not even just the number of students that graduate with a dual degree, that they're graduating from high school with a degree from CF, a AA degree. I mean, just think of what's happening in our community. So sometimes when you see those things about where we ranking, you know, all those things just got to, and go out and feel it. I felt that this time. I was at, I was at Westport, I was at Vanguard, I was at Bellevue and I was just so, you know, full of, of joy. I was just, could not control myself, especially seeing 27 valedictorians. That was a good feeling, wasn't it? It was just exciting just to be there and I just want to thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for having the atmosphere for the students to learn and, and, you know, I know we go through struggles with different things, but to, just like you say, our strategic plan is, we're following it. Our children are succeeding and I'm really, really proud of our district, very proud. Also want to say, at the Central Florida Coalition meeting, I won't be able to attend. I will be at another meeting that morning at the same time. I will be in Tampa, but I, so Ms. Ely will be representing me there at that breakfast. Okay. I was looking on our website today and as always, Mr. Christian, he's always right on it, putting out information, so I thought I might put some out too. So a shout out to parents and, and children. During the summer, you know, summer break is here and it, we're going to be offering free food to hungry students. This year there will be 50 locations. If you can look on our website or call 352-671-4190. There are no applications or income information is necessary to qualify. The children just have to show up and they, they should be 18 years and younger. And thank you, Mr. Christian, for providing that information to us today. All right, Board, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board members have received the alternative placement list for students through May 22nd, 2015. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Board, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 15-107E with educational services through the 2015-16 school year? May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Any discussion? Call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Brenda, can you vote for me?
My computer's updating for some reason.
Four zero. The motion passes four zero. This concludes the televised portion of the agenda.